The Town of Plainville, established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our town council meeting. Today is Monday, November 18th, 2019 at 7:00 PM. If you'll all please stand for the pledge of allegiance, Councilman Underwood will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do not have any presentations or public hearings this evening, so we're going to go right into the minutes of our previous meeting. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes for October 28th, 2019, special meeting, and November 12th, 2019, organizational meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Announcements and reports? Does anybody have any reports to share with us tonight?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just a couple of things. I was on November 9th, I was actually at the middle school sports fundraiser, so I did not attend the Conservation Commission cleanup at Pateroski Pond, but at their meeting last week, there was a full report on it, and it was apparently a very successful morning. They had a good group of volunteers, and there wasn't a cleanup of trash per se, but they did a lot of cleanup of leaves, branches that could go into the pond, that were on the paths. They even had somebody bring a boat, apparently, and they were able to clean some of that stuff from the pond side, which is a little bit easier than going down near the shore. So they were very happy with that event. Last Thursday, went to the Veterans Lunch at the Senior Center, volunteered at that, and it was a full house. You know, it was a great event every year. Committee on Aging is actually meeting this Thursday because it was changed because of the Veterans Lunch last week. And the other meeting I attended, along with Chairperson Pagliisi, is the Complete Count Census Committee that we have formed in town, starting to make preparations to maximize the participation in the 2020 census here in Plainville, since it's so important to make sure we have an accurate count, whether it's funding or representation, that data is really going to matter, and I'm glad we're being proactive with that. There'll be a lot more to come.
Yeah, it's a little project that the Town of Plainville has taken upon itself to try and really publicize the importance of getting as many people counted in the census as possible. And the committee has other folks in the community that are helping us with this as an outreach to the schools, the Senior Center, Chamber of Commerce, various groups that we have reached out to to get them involved. And as this moves along, the census begins April, in April. There will be press releases coming out shortly explaining a little bit about it, and also advertising the need for people to work for the census group. There are needs for folks to do all kinds of tasks and activities, so if somebody wants to do this, you'll be able to look at the website. They will explain some of the opportunities available, and so it's something that would be, you know, part-time basis, but if people have time and they want to get involved, that's also possible. So thank you for mentioning that. We will be having more information as we get closer to some of this rollout for the census, so, thank you. Does anybody else have anything to report? Okay, moving on. Appointments and resignations. We have a couple of appointments to make. Number one, please.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to appoint Danny Carrier, 270 Camp Street, to the Capitol Projects Building Committee for the term ending August 1st, 2021.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number two.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to acknowledge the Town Manager's appointment of Quinn Christopher, 135 New Britain Avenue, number 27, to the Recreation and Park Advisory Board for the term ending May 1st, 2020.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number three.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to accept with regret the resignation of Wayne Fish from the Recycling and Solid Waste Commission.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we have any other appointments that are not listed on our agenda tonight?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to appoint Charles Zetegren, 135 New Britain Avenue, number 33, to the Aviation Commission for the term ending October 31st, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any others?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to appoint Stacy Shaw and Robert Massalaro to the Zoning Board of Appeals for the term 10-119 to 10-124.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Any others? That's it? Okay. Thank you for your help with that. Moving on. We're really moving along here tonight. Item number six, Board of Education liaison. Do we have a report tonight from the Board of Education?
No. Or superintendent. Later.
No? Yes? Okay. Next time. Report to the Town Attorney, Attorney Mastriani. Do you have anything to share with us?
I do not have a report for tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Robert, report to the Town Manager.
I have several items, the first of which is the agreement between the Board of Education and the Education Association, otherwise known as the Teachers Contract. Steve Lepage, Superintendent of Schools, is here this evening to give a summary of the negotiated agreement between the Board of Education and the Education Association. The contract was filed with the Town Clerk on October 31st, 2019, and unless the Town Council rejects the contract, it will go into effect on December 1st. So with your permission, I'd like to have Steve Lepage step forward and give a summary of the process and the contract, and then I'm sure he'll be available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to share the EAP contract with you, Educator Association of Plainville. Thanks also to Chairwoman Pagliisi for sitting on the negotiating committee, along with our current Board Chair, Becky Tyrell, former Board Chair Deb Hardy, Nicole Palmieri, as well as Sam Alderstein, our Director of Business and Finance, and our representatives. The negotiations took place with a pre-meeting just to set up the dates, and then we went right into our meetings. The teachers' union had about, they had a pretty big bench that met in the library, and they had two representatives representing them, Mr. Andros and Ms. Lynch, along with their CEA attorney, Justin Zartman. So throughout the process of the negotiations, we had a comprehensive understanding of where contracts had started to come in, wanted to make sure that we were as, you know, validating what teachers do and the hard work that they have every day and doing the best for our kids, but also being respectful of taxpayers and trying to be reasonable with what was approved throughout that process. So after two meetings, we were, we came to a point where there was what we determined to be somewhat of an impasse, where we didn't feel that we'd be able to meet in the middle. Coming in, you know, their initial proposal, their final proposal at that point was higher than we were willing to accept, so we decided to end that particular meeting and schedule a mediation, which was required of the timeline for the negotiations. The mediation was scheduled with a mediator, however. Following that, several conversations took place between myself and members of the EAP leadership, and they really wanted to come back to the table and try to reach an agreement before going to mediation, having to pay for the whole mediation process. So we were able to set up another meeting, at which all the members I mentioned were present, and after a decent amount of time, a fairly long night, we were able to come to the terms of the agreement. And the basics of, we did limit the terms that each side would ask for to five or fewer because the general contract we thought was still relevant and fairly strong, didn't need to be refined across the board, but it came down to salary benefits and some other small items with some language changes. So in the end, the percent over a three-year period of time ended up being 8.85% total cost over three years. That includes stepping increases and the increases from year to year. When we were negotiating, some of the numbers out there were higher, and one that was lower, but they're very different context with that community. Since that time, I did pull the latest research as to what other contracts came in, and we're on the low-middle side of where the negotiators are coming in. Some have come in in the 11% over three years, and the mid-10s, some high-9s. We're actually, out of the 37 contracts that Shipman and Goodwin, that's our legal representative, negotiates, we were 25th out of 37 as far as, from highest to lowest for the percentage. The other things that were factored in were insurance, you know, with getting a somewhat lower percent than we were expecting we would get, and we were being counseled we would get a, it would very likely be in the 9s if we went to mediation, somewhere in the 9s, low 9s. So we were happy to settle for, you know, the higher ages, 8.85. The insurance is another cost factor. Given that the first year, some of the teachers within that first step, that first year of the contract would not have much of a raise because of the way it was built out over three years, we were willing to stay flat with the 16.5% cost share for the insurance, 83.5% for the Board. The second year goes to a 17%, 83% ratio, and then in the third year of the contract, it goes to an 18% for the EAP employees and 82% for the Board. The only other cost item in there was a one-year, one-time increase of 1% to stipends for things like after-school activities and clubs, which in total amounted to, it was under $2,000 in total as far as an increase, one time, just to give those employees who give extra time after school, running things like student council and class advisories and all the different clubs and activities. It did not include the coaches, but all those smaller clubs and activities, a one-time 1% increase, which was pretty nominal. So in summary, that's basically the outcomes of the contract. There's a lot of smaller language with he and her and more neutral language, things like that, but nothing of great significance or financial impact. I'm happy to entertain any questions about that. I know you had a copy.
I know that when the first discussion started out, there was a pretty big disparity between the administration and the teachers, and I'm not sure if we can even talk about that, but I do have to say that the two sides did come together respectfully, and, you know, the teachers are a very important group in our town, and they did understand, I believe, what you were trying to explain regarding the impacts on everybody, and they understood that.
Right.
So I thought that worked out well. The insurance, again, as we all know, is never going to get any less expensive.
Although the only good thing-
And that's what we're all faced with, of course.
Right. I'm sorry. I would say the only good news, I guess, with insurance is that our rates are expected to go down somewhat due to an adjustment being made by their different regions in the state, so the higher wealth districts are expected to have an increase, whereas our area is expected to go down. I believe it's a percent and a half, but, you know, I have to double-check that fact, but that will help us a little bit with the big picture of insurance. I would say that I agree, Ms. Chair Pagliisi, that, you know, the negotiations went really well, and we ended up meeting in a place we could agree was fair to both sides, and so I thought the process was, although tense at times, and, you know, you have to protect what you believe in, but I agree 100% that our teachers work really hard, and we do tremendous things in Plainville, and really proud of our school district, so we have to acknowledge that as well.
Just one quick question. Do you happen to know what the total value of the contract is for the three years in terms of dollar amounts? Do you have that?
I don't have it broken out for each year. It's different for each year. I'll be happy to, I'll include that in our budget presentations. I know that with all of our contracts, if they're all ratified, you know, we had three contracts since I've been Superintendent, two haven't, still being ratified by their bargaining units, but office professionals and custodians and maintainers-
Right.
-as well as the teachers, and then our bus contract, which was just approved as well. That total impact is somewhere around 2.5% on our budget without anything else being factored in, so, you know, that's a raw number.
Okay.
Any other questions at all?
Any others? Nope. Thank you for coming tonight and explaining to us. We appreciate that.
My pleasure.
Okay. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thanks for serving on the committee as well.
I have a couple of other items. Next is a discussion of the Valley Water System. On November 6th, I met with Don Vaughn and Valley Water Representatives to discuss the proposed ion exchange system for the Woodford Avenue Pump Station. Also present at this meeting were representatives from the Office of Consumer Council and the Public Utilities Regulatory Agency. The purpose of installing the ion exchange system is to significantly lower the hardness of the water supplied by this aquifer. After the system is installed, Valley Water intends to use this wellfield as the main supplier of water for Plainville. Valley Water has received proposals from several consultants for the design of the ion exchange system, and is expected to award a contract in early December, and that's for the design. They're anticipating that bid documents will be finalized by the end of June 2020, and that bids will be received in the fall of 2020, with installation occurring in the spring of 2021. Valley Water also informed PURA and OCC, the Office of Consumer Council, representatives that they plan to submit what they call a general rate case next spring. This proposed rate increase would not involve the improvements to the Woodford Avenue wellfield. Valley Water last submitted a general rate case approximately 10 years ago. As part of that rate case, there will be public hearings and whatnot, so that the public will have the opportunity to weigh in on what is being proposed. They did not indicate what that may or may not be at this point in time.
So the general rate case is not going to include any costs associated with this new process that they're going to implement? Is there an expectation down the road that they would go back and reopen it in order to include that, or is that not the thinking at this time?
Well, at least their plan was to get the rate increase for just their general operation, one that they haven't had for the last 10 years, and to have a re-opener for the, for an adjustment to be made when the system is installed.
Oh.
I'm not sure that PURA and OCC were 100% happy with that process, so we'll see how it plays out. I mean, they would prefer them just to come before them once, if possible, so we'll see. I mean, that was just what they announced as their plan. I'm sure there may be some adjustment to it as we go forward.
Okay. Thank you.
If there's no other questions, the next item I have is the CCM Property Tax Reform Commission. CCM has created a commission to, quote, "craft a new property tax relief initiative," unquote, to bring before the residents of Connecticut in 2020. I have volunteered to be one of the 37 mayors, first selectmen and town managers to serve in this commission. It should be noted that Connecticut's property tax collection averages almost $3,000 per person, which is the third highest amount in the United States. Plainville's property taxes account for 68.6% of the total revenue in the town budget. The commission will tackle three main questions, namely, one, how best to fund services other than relying heavily on property taxes? Two, how to deliver services in the most cost-effective manner? And three, how state government can effectively stabilize its surging pension and retirement benefit costs? The goal of the commission is to come up with a recommendation that would reduce property taxes by a minimum of 25%. Once the commission has finalized its work, CCM intends to launch what they call an intensive grassroots campaign to inform voters of the recommendations. I've already attended the first meeting of the commission, and I look forward to participating in what I consider this worthwhile and long overdue endeavor. Next item I have is polling locations.
No argument about that, Robert.
Next item I have, I've been labeled polling locations. A recent staff meeting was held to discuss polling locations in Plainville. For those of you who don't know, there are currently four polling locations in town. They are located at Tofflon School, Linus Street School, and Wheeler Elementary School, and Our Lady of Mercy Gymnasium. The review was done due to safety concerns, especially when school is in session during voting. Present during this meeting were Steve Lepage, Superintendent of Schools, Police Chief Matthew Kitania, the registrar of voters, the Town Clerk, and myself as the Town Manager. The current policy is that school is not in session on election day each year. It was also pointed out that school will also not be in session when presidential primaries are held once every four years, and we have one that's coming up in the spring. The issue at hand is what should be done, if anything, when state or local primaries are held in early September. This is not a yearly occurrence, and it's generally not known whether one will happen until midsummer. Just so happens we did have one early September this year. The participants looked at possible alternative voting locations and/or the consolidation of voting districts. Due to parking considerations, especially during presidential elections, practical new polling locations could not be found. Additionally, changing the polling locations for the fall primaries could be confusing for voters. The recommendation of the town staff was to keep the present voting locations and provide a police officer at the three schools in those instances where a primary occurs in Next item I have is what I call the bond anticipation note sale. The town recently received five bids from financial institutions for bond anticipation notes totaling $4 million. The notes will mature on May 21st of next year, after which the town would permanently borrow monies over a 20-year period. So this is a temporary borrowing. These monies would be used to pay for the town's share of the Wheeler Elementary School project, which is currently running ahead of schedule and below the authorized appropriation. Hopefully, that trend will continue. We expect it will. The low bid was submitted by TD Securities with a net interest cost of 1.4149%. A previous ban issued earlier this year had an interest rate of 1.55%, so bond anticipation notes or short-term borrowing interest rates have dropped a little bit since earlier this year. The result of the borrowing, a borrowing $4 million for approximately six months, will result in a net interest cost of $27,550. Next item I have is the OSHA inspection, and this happened to happen at the Police Department. An Occupational Safety and Health Administration, otherwise known as OSHA, inspection was conducted at the Plainville Police Department on June 25th, 2019. The inspection was the result of a complaint filed with their office. The inspection was completed the next day on June 26th, 2019. On September 18th, two letters were received from the Connecticut Department of Labor, Division of Occupational Safety and Health. First letter detailed several violations, along with a fine of $280. Letter required the town to abate the violations by November 27th, 2019. The second letter detailed what they called a "letter of significant findings" and requested a response from the town by October 15th. On October 15th, a response was sent listing the actions being taken to comply with the violations. A second letter dated October 17th detailing the plan to address the significant finding was sent as well. To date, the town has corrected all but two items that were cited by OSHA. The first item, first of these items is what they said was accumulation of dust present on the fabric walls located in the dispatch area. The fabric walls act as a sound attenuator for this room. After review of this item, it was determined that the fabric walls need to be removed and replaced with a wall covering that can be cleaned on a regular basis, non-fabric, and still act as a sound attenuator. A proposal dated October 21st was received from Fibro Sciences, Inc., for the installation of what they called a SoundSeal Class 1 Fire-Rated Fiberglass Acoustic Panel. The cost of this installation, including the removal of the current system, is $15,633. The second issue is the installation of an exhaust system for the evidence room. A proposal dated October 14th was received from Modern Mechanical Services, Inc., to perform this installation. The price for this proposal was $7,975, and this also includes the town doing some work as well to help with the installation of this system, to save some monies. OSHA is requiring that these two items be abated by November 27th. The total cost to address them is $23,608. Currently, there is approximately $27,000 remaining in the unclassified account. It is recommended the Town Council approve moving forward with these two proposals. There is an item under new business regarding this recommendation. Chief Makitania is here this evening to answer any questions that you may have as well. If you want me to have-
Does anybody have questions for the chief regarding some of this work that needs to be done?
I can have, you want to say anything, Chief?
We'd love to hear from you, as always.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. So two things that come to mind. The $280 fine is a significantly lower fine than what was first anticipated, and that fine being that low is indicative of the transparency and cooperation that OSHA received when they got to our facility and started touring the facility, and also coming to the realization that we were working on probably 90% of these projects at our own pace. So the complaint really just hastened the process. We were in the process, myself and Dave Emery, were in the process of addressing these items, but when it comes to employee safety in the workplace, it's very common for me to encounter employees that just don't feel that we're able to move fast enough. These issues are real. The condition of the dispatch area being that they're, a cloth material collects all kinds of dust, even exhaust from vehicles that comes in through the intake, so they're obviously dirty, and it is obvious that in that contained area, they're breathing air in the same area where these dirty wall hangings are. It's a technology that was good 16-plus years ago. Today, they have impervious materials that we could actually have our custodial staff wipe down and maintain. They should be longer lasting. They'll still provide the sound attenuation that we need in the dispatch area with radios and phones, but the fact that they can be disinfected. This is somewhat of a preparatory product. There are other cloth products out. I would recommend we stay away from them. The cloth just won't hold up in that environment. The exhaust in the evidence room, that's something that when we built the building, when the building was being specked out, no one thought that we'd have these large holds of marijuana and things that actually do permeate the building. So when OSHA arrived, you could smell the cannabis, the marijuana, coming out of the evidence room and permeating the area in the hallway and the basement level, so they made an immediate decision that this was something that needed to be looked at. They don't actually have a standard for it, but the way they explained it to me was, we need to get this fixed. As the Town Manager explained, the town side were doing some of the work to mitigate the price on this. What this involves is getting a system that will pull the air away from the officer who's in the evidence room working. So this will be, this is definitely a plus, and again, I think it's a very necessary item. If you have any questions with me, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Next item I have is a memorandum of agreement regarding the Homeland Security Grant Program. The State Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection is the designated recipient and state administrative agency for the U.S. Department of Homeland Security Grant Program for fiscal year 19. They were probably the same for '18, '17, '16, and '15 as well, but Plainville is part of the Region 3, and the Capitol Region Council of Governments is the coordinating agency for this grant program. The state has allocated $358,659.20 to Region 3. I'm not quite sure where they came up with that number, but that was the number. There is an item under new business that would authorize the execution of a memorandum of understanding for the use of these monies for regional purposes as determined by CROG, and we do participate in their decision-making process as well. So it's just a procedural matter. They get the money, they want to use it for regional purposes. Each town has to technically authorize them to do that. Each town has to technically authorize them to do that. Next item I have is a Small Cities Program Grant Award. Last month, the state notified Plainville that we were awarded a Small Cities Grant in the amount of $1.5 million to make improvements to the Woodmere Manor and Centerview Village senior housing complexes managed by the Housing Authority. There is an item under New Business that is required by the state of Connecticut in order to move forward with the grant award. The resolution recognizes that Plainville is cognizant of the conditions and prerequisites for the Small Cities Program and authorizes the Town Manager to file the grant application and to execute the necessary documents to participate in the program. So, it's kind of an after the fact, now that they've told us we have the grant, it's part of the grant agreement that you pass this resolution so that we can move forward. Next item I have is the Financial Dashboard, which was distributed in your meeting packages and was posted on the town webpage, and I'd like to turn the meeting over to Scott to go through that as well as any happenings that he may have. I don't know if you have happenings, you have some as well. Okay.
Brief happenings this evening.
Thank you.
Going over the expenditures for the October Financial Dashboard, looking at the town budget, right now, the town is coming in at about 37.57% expended with a two-year average of about 33.87, and the general government and Board of Education budgets are slightly higher than the two-year average, and that's just because of the expenses paid out for the state partnership plan. Looking at the hauler tonnages for solid waste, we're coming in roughly at about our two-year average, and then we also have some information in regards to the recycling, in which expenditures to date have been about $28,000 with a tip fee of about $87.19. Looking at the overtime report, the police are coming in under their two-year average, while roadways and buildings and grounds are over their two-year averages due to some of the additional work that have been taking place over the weekends and some of the additional events that have happened this past year. And nothing currently in our snow overtime budgets. Looking at the revenues portion for both all revenues and current taxes, they are sitting slightly higher than our two-year averages, coming in at just about 50% for all of our revenues to date, and for current taxes, sitting in about 57%. The estimated unassigned fund balance sits at about 15% as well. Moving on to the special funds, everything is right in line with the two-year averages with the exception of the Robertson Airport for expenditures and revenues, and that's just a timing issue. After talking with the Finance Director, it was just getting some bills paid out a little bit later than we did in the years past. And moving on to the major projects report, there were some minor expenditures in the month of October for the road bond, and then the only other two projects were the phosphorus removal project and the Wheeler School project, which are moving along and are significantly nearing the end of their, their construction project time, with the Wheeler School project that should be completed around the beginning of the new year, and the water treatment plant should be expected somewhere around March or April of next year. That concludes the Financial Dashboard. I will move on to the happenings. The only happenings I have to report on this evening are from the Senior Center. Tomorrow at 10:30 a.m., they will be hosting a grandparents-raising-grandchildren session, and this is for those who are raising a grandchild or another young relative, and this is to come and share resources, ideas, and struggles for those who may be going through the same kind of situation. And they also have at 10 a.m. tomorrow morning, Caregiving Connections, and this is for a family or a friend caring for an older adult. Come join the group of others who are doing the same. There, they'll be able to recognize some of the challenges and frustrations and then receive some support for those who may be going through those kind of situations. On Wednesday, November 20th at 1 p.m., the Plainville Library Director, Trish Tomlinson, will visit the Senior Center to explain how Plainville residents can access information and electronic resources for free. On November 20th, she will introduce the Consumer Reports Online Resource available through the Plainville Library. And on Tuesday, November 26th at 10 a.m., they will be having a one-hour program for older adults and family members and friends who are concerned about an older loved one who may be lonely or socially isolated. Their presenter will help you assess events and circumstances that can lead to loneliness and social isolation, describe benefits of social connections and friendships, share ways to overcome social isolation, and describe opportunities to increase social connections and form new friendships. For any of these programs and for more robust listening of their programs, please visit the Plainville Senior Center or call them at 860-747-5728.
Thank you, Scott and Robert. Does anybody have any questions or comments regarding the reports from Robert or Scott tonight? Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just not necessarily a question for the Town Manager, but regarding the teacher's contract, is that something we would like to add to the agenda and vote on tonight?
You have, well, there's options, as the Town Manager said. We can, we can either accept it, reject it, or take no action, at which time, if the council takes no action, it will be implemented in, is it 30 days, Robert? When they...
From filing, from filing, yes, 30 days from filing, which would be, by my count, if you don't count the day of the filing and the, you know, and the last day, it would be December 1st.
Okay, so that, those are the options. If we don't add it to the agenda and take no action, it will just, at some point, go through as it is.
Yeah, I knew that. My question is, does this council want to add it to the agenda and vote on it? Typically, traditionally, we have voted on this. We haven't just let it go. You know, we've taken the perspective that it was important to vote on it, but I'm just, I'm not looking to put anyone in the corner. I'm just trying to see if...
Oh, I defer to my colleagues to find out if they want to, if they want to add it or if they just want to let it stand on its own and go through. Opinions from others?
I did go back and look, and in 2015, the last time we had a three-year contract, we did vote on it.
Okay.
And I would prefer to follow that, to follow that precedent.
Anybody else?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to add that as number four under New Business and then move tax refunds on the addendum down to number five.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Are there any other comments to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, it is added as number four. Refunds are number five. Okay. Any other questions or concerns regarding the Town Manager's report or Scott's report? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to public comments during this portion of our meeting, we asked the public, if you wish to speak to the council, come to either podium, please state your name and address, and you'll be given three minutes to speak to the council. Does anybody wish to speak? I don't have a signup sheet where anybody signed earlier, so I just open it up to the floor. Mr. Kislik.
John Kislik, 65 Forest, we'll have you. Good evening, Town Council.
Hello.
Robert, Scott? Hello. I got a few things. One of them, first, did all of you get my email?
Yes.
Okay, and I feel kind of bad that I have to, because of the three-minute thing, kind of tell you what I'm going to talk about and have it explained more. And the other thing is, we have one meeting this month, so we have three minutes this month to address this council. I'm asking that you can give us at least five minutes tonight to address this council. I mean, I have issues here that I think are important, and I think the public should hear them. So, you know, I'd appreciate if you would. First of all, the thing I have is, on the vote, 71% of the voters, registered voters in this town didn't care enough to come out and vote for you or vote for anybody for this town. It's sad. The other thing I have is, I want to talk about the fund balance. Fund balance, according to Financial Dashboard, a mil at 97% collection rate is $1,396. You all have this. And we have a fund balance now of $9,122,432. That's 14.77% of the budget, equal to 6.53 mils. I want to suggest to this council, and you see in my writing, this is getting too high. This is taxpayer money sitting there, $9 million that we're paying, and I feel we shouldn't. I want to suggest for the next budget, you take one full mil, the million three, out of this undesignated fund balance. It'll leave $7,725,810, which would be 12.7%, 5.63 mils. And the thing that will increase that, like I, my email to you, Wheeler's going to end. You're going to get a final payment from the state, and I estimate they're usually between $1 and $2 million, and these councils have been putting that back into the undesignated fund balance. If you do the same, you're going to bring yourself right back up to the nine. And if we take that one, that one mil, that'll cover, most likely cover, the Board of Ed increase, maybe any little increase in the town, and may even be able to give the taxpayers a little cut in the mil rate, which we deserve. Now, the other thing on the Board of Ed's contract, I want to recommend that you take no action on that. One of you were involved. None of the rest of you had anything to do with negotiations. I think you shouldn't touch it, you shouldn't approve it, you shouldn't reject it, just let it go through. And I hope there's four of you that do that, because we do not need more people on the Board of Education sitting on this council, and I'm getting tired of that. Keep that in mind.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council tonight? No? Mr. Frangos?
Lou Frangos, 10 Fairbanks Street. I'll start by saying congratulations to the newly-elected Town Council and a special welcome to Mr. Underwood. Good luck to you. The only, I have just one question for folks and for understanding. I'm looking at the dashboard, Financial Dashboard, and I'm looking at major projects, and what spurred my interest is the Town Manager mentioned on the Wheeler School project, we're ahead of schedule, which is wonderful. The only question I do have, and maybe I just don't understand the chart itself, I'm looking at my September 2019 Major Projects Report, and now I'm looking at Major Project Report 1031. I focused in on the Wheeler project. Nothing changed. A whole month went by, nothing changed. Is that, do you accumulate and then, because it looks, if you didn't know any better, you'd say nothing happened last month? Or maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm misreading it. I'm looking for help.
Well, I, you know, I can only assume that sometimes payments and things that get processed from the Capital Projects Building Committee, by the time it gets through some of our processes, maybe it doesn't show up right away. Work is going on, and I'm sure that the contractors are submitting payments, but by the time we get them through and it gets through the process here, may not show up for a month. I know.
I always get this head nod bothering. Just, you know, again, you read the report and, thank you.
Sometimes there's timing of how things are processed and submitted, too, so I would defer to the Town Manager on specifics of that, but...
Very simply, no payments were made in the month of October. Okay, they may have been made, you know, the first of November, but it wasn't, there were no payments made in October. It doesn't mean that work wasn't happening, it's just the timing of when actual checks were cut.
Work was happening. So, shouldn't, then, if that being the case, shouldn't they present the complete or that pertains only to money?
That pertains to payments.
Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Mr. Edman?
Still a lot of pain, but what I have to say, I feel is important, so that's why I'm here. Edman, Joel Edman, 63 Halleberry Lane, no rail, no trail, and no thank you. I emphatically profess and believe that the trail gap is not a good investment for our Plainville community. It is not going to improve our community, community's economy and quality of life, especially for the many adjoining townspeople that will become negatively affected, and it's not a good investment for the common good. Simsbury is having problems with coyotes and trying to keep them out of their neighborhoods. We have them here also in Plainville, near Norton Park as well as elsewhere. They are everywhere. Something else to think about with the trail. The trail through town will consume many on-road parking spaces, moving communication poles, water hydrants, cutting down trees, and minimizing road width, therefore creating traffic problems. Really, the trail through town is not feasible without an abandoned railroad to use. Government, state, and town spending for the rails-to-trails gap through Plainville is not only unnecessarily expensive, but also wasteful and irresponsible. It's time to adhere to the debt diet that Governor Mott proposed. Maybe sometime down the road, the railroad in town will become abandoned, and maybe that would be a good time to close the gap. Trying to design and build alignment, see, I feel, is a futile, wasteful, costly endeavor that will only produce consternation, hatred, and discontent to negatively affected homeowners and traffic. It will be like the circus that never leaves town or Norton Park, which possibly could change to Norton Park and Ride. No rail, no trail, and no thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Roberta?
Roberta Loria, 18 Perrin Road. For the benefit of Carol and the Town Council Minutes, I oppose any trail or alignment that will be on next to or have an impact on any neighborhood in Plainville, especially Perrin Road. Simply put, if there are no rails available, there should be no trails. About two weeks ago, there was an election. The majority of voters in this town felt that you would be best to represent them when you came to these chambers and sat in those seats. In April, there was another vote. As you know, the Board of Education budget failed by approximately 1.5%, resulting in a $100,000 reduction, and another vote was made in May, and ultimately, the BoE passed. During these three elections, the democratic process was used and prevailed. I have a silly question. Why was this system good enough for you then, but when it came to the trail, with 69% of town respondents saying no, you ignored them? Why did it make sense for you, but not for your neighbors? When you asked residents to elect you so you can represent them, I would hope you understood that this volunteer position would require you to sometimes do due diligence to make sure you truly are representing the residents. You are failing miserably at this when it comes to the trail. Please do your job and stop this nonsense now.
Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so?
Dave Albert, 56 Halleberry. I was at that, the Pateroski cleanup, and I was amazed at how bad that pond has really gotten. The amount of erosion that this is unbelievable, and the path basically goes like three-quarters of the way, and it's all overgrown with brush. I'm talking like 15, 20 years' worth of overgrowth. I, I think the, it would be good if the town put that on their capital improvement to fix, to complete the path somehow, you know, through the, it's basically, I think, the northeast corner, that's, that's a real mess. But we had a lot of people out there, and that's a nice walking park. I just hate to see it, you know, erode away like that. With the teacher's contract, what in dollars is a 2% or 3% increase per year?
We're going to get that information for you. We don't have it tonight, so to be specific, we will get it for you.
Okay, all right. But it's, it's... But it's, seeing as, I guess what I'm concerned about is, every year, the teacher, the Board of Ed piece of the pie continues to rise, and it sounds to me like it's another guaranteed 2% to 3% tax increase. I don't see how there's any way around that, but I hope you can prove me wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Anybody else? Joanne?
Joanne Edman, 166 West Main Street. For Carol on the record, I oppose Alignment C and all its ramifications to the streets, backyards, front yards, into the park. Let's can it. And tonight, though, I wanted, it still concerns the trail, and I have a theme, communication. And has everyone ever in their lifetime seen the great movie Cool Hand Luke? This is for the chief tonight, if he's still here. Oh, he's still here. This is a good one for you to get. Okay, there's an immortal and immortal line in that movie. The warden's standing on the hill, and he says, I hope I can quote it right, "What we got here is failure to communicate." And it's, he says it several times, "What we got here is failure to communicate." Because, and we can adapt that to what's going on here. We have been coming up here for, what, months and months and months, to talk against this trail, coming into Plainville via the Alignment C. You have other ways to come, to use that trail. Best one is to wait until the railroad line is inactive, but if you can't wait for that, then go down Route 10, it's already marked. And there's no reason you can't do that. But, you know, you have a new member on the dais now, Mr. Underwood. And I know how the rest of you feel about this trail. You are all in bed with each other. You're in bed with Mr. Lee because you are for the trail. You are, all snug as a bug in a rug. So I want to know how Mr. Underwood feels. Have you, you've had time now to study it? Study all the ramifications and so on, so forth?
Not yet, Joanne. I'm going to review it, though.
What?
Not yet, I am going to review it.
Oh, you haven't yet?
No.
Oh, gee. I thought it would get you tonight. I wish, I wish you would, you know, come up with something so that we know how you stand. And I hope that we have a meeting pretty soon as to what's going on. I tried Mr. Bush's office today, and he's on a two-week vacation, and the boys there didn't know what was going on. So darn.
Joanne, can you wrap up? You've expired your time.
Oh, golly, like John says.
Failure to communicate.
It would be so nice to have five minutes, but anyhow, I can wrap it up.
Thank you.
But as it stands right now, and this is for you, chief, we got trouble. Trouble right here in River City until this situation is resolved. Please resolve this trail thing, honestly. People don't want it.
Okay, Joanne, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so?
Yes, ma'am. Hi, good evening. I guess I picked the right council meeting to attend. My name is Veronica DeLanjo. I'm a resident of New Brighton. Just want to introduce myself. I'm the district director for Congresswoman Johanna Hayes, and I noticed there are a couple of items on the agenda regarding grants, and I'd be happy to talk to the town manager after the meeting about the Homeland Security Grant and the Small Cities Grant. So just wanted to introduce myself.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Anybody else? Okay, with that, I will close the public comments section. Thank you for your comments. We'll move on to our New Business portion of our meeting. Item number one, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to adopt a resolution entitled authorizing resolution of the town council regarding a memorandum of agreement with the state for use of homeland security grant funding.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number two?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to adopt a resolution entitled Resolution Regarding Connecticut Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to approve and authorize the town manager to execute the following agreements due to OSHA inspection findings. Vibra Sciences, Inc., in the amount of $15,633 for the installation of Sound Seal Class I fire-rated fiberglass acoustic panels in the Police Department Dispatch Center and Modern Mechanical Services, Inc., in the amount of $7,975 for the installation of the exhaust system in the Police Department Evidence Room.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Either section? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number four, please.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'll take a stab at this. Motion to ratify the three-year agreement between the Board of Education and Education Association, beginning July 1st, 2020, and ending June 30th, 2023.
I have a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number five?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the addendum.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Item number 12, Other Discussions of Interest. Mr. Lee, do you have anything to share with us?
I have no items.
Okay, anybody else have anything they'd like to share? Okay. No executive session. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?